Do I need to be concerned?
Oh, I got it.
Just let, just let me go. Just give me the location that starts to the heart of the nation.
Good. I'm good at that.
I'm sorry, I, I get trauma here. I was talking.
All right, are we ready to go?
Murder.
I think we are.
You all ready to go? All right. I call to go, I call to order this work session of the Scranton School Board for October thirty, twenty twenty-three. Please rise for the predigible agents.
My predigible agents to comply with the United States of America. Consider Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Um, the first item on our agenda this evening is budget finance.
Okay. We will have a presentation from PFM on our five-year projections.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, tonight, uh, we have two representatives from PFM, um, Ian Tyson and Bree, who are here to, we can go through a brief presentation on the, uh, the, the district's five-year projections, which are based off of the preliminary budget that was adopted over the summer. So I'm going to, as you can see, we are sharing our screen up on the stage. I'm going to turn it over to Ian and Bree. Um, Ian, Bree, can you hear us? So you, you guys okay?
Yep, we can hear you fine. Can you hear us loud and clear?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Ian Tyson, and I'm a senior managing consultant with Public Financial Management, and I'm joined here tonight with, with my colleague, Rianu Nabu. Um, as you all know, we provide, um, advice through, as a technical advisor from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Education. And as Pat mentioned, we're here tonight to present to you our projections based on the district's preliminary twenty twenty-four budget. So just as a recap from some of the good news that the district has seen over the last year. Um, under the recovery plan and thanks to the hard work of you all, um, with the improved finances and the other progress that you've been able to make, um, the district exited, um, was removed from moderate financial recovery status and has entered the five-year monitoring phase. So this budget for the twenty forty-four calendar year is the first budget that will be under this monitoring phase. So after the district adopted its preliminary budget back in the summer, um, we've been working with Pat to, um, refine those projections and to provide an update for you all as you consider some important decisions leading into the adoption of the final budget over the next weeks and months. With that, I'll turn this over to my colleague, Bree.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'll walk us through some of the financial assumptions that are in the preliminary twenty twenty-four budget and in our projections out four years. Um, so here we have two pie charts of the general fund revenues and expenditures. Um, on the revenue side, the two major drivers of revenue are local sources, um, which is the blue portion. It makes up thirty-six percent of revenue. And state sources make up the largest.
Bree, could I, can you just hold on one second? We're gonna try to, uh, increase the volume here on the stage. Just give me one moment, okay?
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, it's more distorted.
It's distortion rather than audio.
Okay. See what I can do.
I might grab a water. I'll just go.
Hey, we're having some problems here up on the stage. Is there anything we can do on that? All right, have her try it again. Okay. All right, hold on one second. All right, Bree, Bree, you want to give it another shot? I believe they tried to adjust the volume.
Sure. Um, is this good? Can you all hear me?
It's louder.
What's that? Yeah, it's, it's a little louder, but I think it's the, they're saying it's, it's reverberation or something.
Is it on my side? Should I take off my headphones?
It seems better.
Oh, wait, hold on. Go ahead, Bree, try, try one more time.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think we're good. We're, we're good enough. Thank you. All right, bye.
Great. Um, okay. So on the state sources side, um, which is, uh, the yellow portion of the revenues pie chart, that takes up fifty-seven percent, which is the largest portion of
Okay, thanks, okay.
school district revenue. Um, the other side is the expenditures. Here, the majority of expenditures are taken up with, uh, salaries and benefits. That's sixty-two percent. That's the blue portion there. I also wanted to highlight the, um, the budgetary reserve portion, which is four percent. That is a one-time piece in the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, it's around seven point three million dollars.
Bree, could you just hold on one moment before we, we proceed? Um, members of the board, your microphones are muted now. That was part of what was causing the, I guess, the, the sound kickback. Um, if we have any comments, you know, we'll just have to notify us so when you speak, we can be heard, okay? Thanks. Thank you, Bree.
Okay, thank you. Um, so here I'll talk about some of the major revenue and expenditure assumptions. Um, I'm not going to talk through every single piece, but if you have any questions or thoughts, you could look through the slides, um, after the presentation. Um, so here we have real estate taxes, um, which is a large driver of local sources. In twenty twenty-five, we're assuming that assessed value will decrease by around the decrease of, um, between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So that would be one percent. And then beginning in twenty twenty-six, assessed value will continue to decrease, but more modestly by point five percent annually. And this is based on historical trends. Um, in our baseline projections, we don't assume local tax rate increases, but we do assume in twenty twenty-four that the preliminary budget's one point two five percent military increase, um, will stand in the baseline projection. For state sources, the major driver is basic education funding and special education funding. Here, we are assuming that Scranton's share of total funding, which is based on demographic and financial data, is held flat from the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We're assuming the statewide allocations for twenty-three, twenty-four, um, is five hundred sixty-seven million for BEF and forty-six million for SEF. In the following years, we're assuming a hundred eighty million for BEF and thirty-five billion for SEF, which is based on historical trends for state subsidies prior to twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, although it hasn't been approved by the legislature, we are assuming an additional a hundred million in level up that will be distributed through the level up formula. This is assumed in the preliminary twenty twenty-four budget, so it's also assumed in our, um, preliminary projections. Our expenditure assumptions are, um, driven by salaries. So here we have, um, the contract increases and step movement for Act ninety-three administrators and twelve oh one group employees. They receive the step movement, which is exemplified in the table below. We also have the teachers and paraprofessionals, uh, contract, which also includes step movement and the percentage increases in the table below. Um, ESSER-funded positions are incorporated into the general fund after the grants expire. Other major expenditure line items are charter school tuition. We're assuming nine hundred sixty-five students will be enrolled in twenty twenty-four, and we're increasing that by thirty students per year, which is based on historical trends. We're also going to be recalculating the tuition rates based on the PDE three sixty-three formula. Another large driver is debt service. We're assuming debt service schedule based on, um, what was provided to us by the district's financial advisor. We are also assuming an increase of one point two million per year beginning in twenty twenty-five and one point two million beginning in twenty twenty-seven. And this is to reflect expecting borrow, borrowing costs, um, in association with the capital plan that's currently being worked on, um, and will likely need some additional spending. So financial multi-year projections are used by high-performing school districts in order to help maintain stable finances. Um, in this case, we're using a four-year projection that will end in twenty twenty-eight in order to be consistent with the presentation that we gave in May of twenty twenty-three, where we showed the district's projections going out to twenty twenty-eight. This baseline projection that I'll show you in just a minute assumes, um, status quo. So we don't assume any changes in current operations. We don't assume any tax increases or any, um, cost mitigation efforts. Um, it's just if the district continued on until twenty twenty-eight, what would the projections look like? Um, typically for PA school districts, um, we assume that expenditures will grow more quickly than revenues, um, especially since we aren't assuming any tax increases. Um, but this is still a helpful exercise in seeing what sources of financial stress the district may be dealing with in the coming years. So here is the baseline multi-year projection going out to twenty twenty-eight. Again, this is a status quo projection. We aren't assuming any corrective action. We aren't assuming any tax increases outside of the one point two five percent increase in twenty twenty-four. Um, here you see that the district is able to maintain a positive operating result in twenty twenty-five of two point six million. Um, but it starts to see a negative operating result in twenty twenty-six, which carries through to twenty twenty-eight. It increases by about three to five million per year. Um, however, the district is able in twenty twenty-eight to maintain four point one percent, or four point one million dollar fund balance, um, after it draws down, um, from twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight. Um, as I said, we expect that expenditures will grow faster than, uh, revenues, even with annual increases in state subsidies at that conservative rate that I mentioned earlier. Um, in this case, the district has three major categories that are driving expenditures, um, that it has limited ability to control in this context. One would be salaries and benefits. The district recently negotiated contracts with several of its, um, several of its, uh, personnel groups. And this is something that will carry on through the projections, um, that the district has already committed to paying for. Um, another area is charter school tuition. Um, we are assuming that enrollment will continue to grow in the projections. Although in prior versions, we had projected that enrollment would remain flat. In this case, it's going to continue growing. Um, and the last item is capital. We expect that the district will continue having to invest in buildings and renovation needs in the projections. Um, despite all of those things, the district is in a slightly more optimistic state than previous, uh, presentations that we've given of the projections, which shows how, um, the twenty twenty-four budget is addressing some of the long-term concerns. Although these, um, assumptions show the annual deficits, the district does have opportunity to increase revenues and control expenditure cost growth. So we'll walk through some of those in the next couple of slides, um, and show some tax increases and other, um, initiatives that the district could explore. Um, so we've put together three scenarios for the district today. Scenario one looks at a three point nine five percent real estate tax increase. And this is based on the tax increase needed to balance in our May projection, um, from last May. Um, so we're assuming a one point two five percent increase in twenty twenty-four, and then we're assuming annual three point nine five percent increases beginning in twenty twenty-five. Our other two scenarios do not assume any tax increases in twenty twenty-four through the projected twenty twenty-eight. Um, for scenario two, we're assuming that the district will hire twenty-three intermediate school teachers. And, and scenario three, we're assuming that the district will reestablish pre-kindergarten. Um, and again, both of these scenarios don't show any tax increases. So here we have budget scenario number one. Um, in the chart below, you can see that, um, we've kept the preliminary budget the same with the one point two five percent tax increase. Um, each year following in twenty-five through twenty-eight, we are showing a three point nine five percent tax increase. Here you see that, uh, the district is able to maintain positive operating results through twenty twenty-seven with a very small negative operating result in twenty twenty-eight. Um, this shows that the district is pretty much able to maintain its good financial standing throughout twenty twenty-eight with this, um, three point nine five percent annual tax increase. However, if the district did want to be completely balanced in twenty twenty-eight, it would need a four point one percent tax increase. Um, but again, this is assuming no changes in operational costs. Here we have scenario two, which shows, um, increase of twenty-three intermediate school teachers with no tax increases in twenty twenty-four or the projected years. Um, here we're showing that the teachers are hired, um, in a rolling, um, sort of twelve teachers in twenty-four, twenty-five, then eleven teachers in twenty-five, twenty-six, um, which spreads the cost across, um, the projected years. So in twenty twenty-four, we are also using the budgetary reserve that I mentioned earlier to help reduce, um, the cost and balance the budget in twenty twenty-four. So in this scenario, we are seeing a negative operating result open in twenty twenty-six and carry through to twenty twenty-eight. Um, but again, this scenario does not show any tax increases. Um, in twenty twenty-eight, the district does have a negative total fund balance and a negative operating result of about twelve point, um, three million. Scenario three is our final scenario with the re-establishment of pre-kindergarten, again with no tax increases. Um, so below, we show, um, the impact of adding, um, fourteen teachers and fourteen paraprofessionals to the district. We are also assuming, um, operational costs of thirty thousand in twenty-four, twenty-five, and that number would increase, um, based on inflation and projected years. So these, um, projections are very similar to the prior scenario. Um, a negative operating result opens up in twenty twenty-six and carries through to twenty twenty-eight, and there is also a negative, uh, total fund balance in twenty twenty-eight. Um, so I wanted to talk for a minute about the Act One Index. Um, the district is required by the Amendment Recovery Plan to pass a structurally balanced budget, um, each year. So one option that the district has would be to raise taxes to the adjusted Act, Act One Index each year to generate enough local revenue to support these, um, additional programs. In the table below, you'll see that we have, um, three actual Act One indexes. So twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five is the actual adjusted Act One Index. And then twenty-six through twenty-eight are projections based on the Commonwealth Independent Fiscal Office. Um, here in the table, it shows that if you began raising taxes in twenty twenty-five to the Act One Index, um, you would see four point four million dollars in real estate and delinquent real estate collections. That would compound to fifteen point three percent, or fifteen point three million in twenty twenty-eight. Um, going to the Act One Index would more than, um, cover the cost of scenario two or scenario three. Um, if the district wanted to balance in twenty twenty-eight, um, it would need a five point four percent annual increase starting in twenty twenty-five in order to afford either scenario two, um, or scenario three without going to the Act One Index. Um, so our conclusions from these scenarios, um, is that the district seems to be able to maintain financial stability if it receives level-up funds, um, which level-up funds currently are not finalized by the legislature. Um, but if they're received, the district would be able to afford, um, to maintain the status quo and the commitments that it already has, which we discussed earlier. Um, if it raised taxes to the one point two five percent, which is in the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget, and then continues to raise taxes in twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight, um, by three point nine five percent. Um, however, scenario two or three would require a higher annual tax increase, and the district would have difficulty, um, maintaining both of those programs at the same time, um, especially if it delays raising taxes until twenty twenty-five. Um, in that case, the district may need to consider raising taxes to the Act One Index in order to afford, um, either of those scenarios. Um, in addition, the district has a couple of things, um, that may allow it to experience some additional financial pressure um, that we'll continue talking about through the following slides. A couple of major factors that could affect Scranton's finances. Um, here, we are assuming that the state subsidy that the district receives, um, is the twenty-three, twenty-four state subsidy. Um, and we are also assuming that there is no impact from the fair funding decision. Um, again, level up has not been, um, decided by the legislature, um, but it is included in our projections, so that's another area to, um, look out for. Um, with, even with these things, the district will likely still require tax increases to support its current commitments. Um, another factor is that the district's real estate tax assessment has been decreasing in recent years, and, um, it would require higher annual tax increases to maintain, uh, the revenues. On the expenditure side, charter school enrollment, again, is above previous ten, uh, trends, and we expect it to continue to grow in the projected years. Um, we also know that the district will soon receive its building utilization report, which may affect, um, transportation, enrollment, and capital investment costs. Um, I'll pass it off to Ian to talk about some of the budget drivers for the district in more detail.
Thank you, Bree. So we'll start off on a positive note. Um, so on the revenue side of the budget,
So on the revenue side of the budget, like Bree mentioned in the pie chart, state sources are the largest share of the district's revenues. So each year going into the budget cycle and even for planning for the multi-year projections, this is the first place that we walk that we look at. What are the what is a reasonable assumption for the revenues and resources that'll be available for you in the future? Now, we had a couple of good years over the past two school years when the Commonwealth put in funds through the Level Up Program and had significant increases in formula-based funding. So right now with the projections, we're assuming that that continues at a more modest pace, mostly just to see if the district couldn't continue to manage its budget under those conditions, setting aside anything that's going to happen with the fair funding decision, which we'll get to in a minute. So on the revenue side of the budget, first thing we look at is state aid, its trends, and reasonable expectations for the future. Now, we talked about level up funding a couple of times tonight. And this is going to be a fairly significant impact to the district's budget if it does get finalized. About 2.3 to 2.4 million dollars will be provided based on the current estimates. And that that amount would go to the Scranton School District of that 100 million that has been discussed in the legislature. Now, since that hasn't been finalized, you know, that is an open-ended question for what it would mean for the district. If you did not receive that, just to put it in the context of what it means for you financially, if you wanted to raise a similar amount of revenue through local taxes just by going to a real estate tax increase, you need to increase your tax rate by about 6%. So that is a very hefty source of ongoing revenue if if the district does receive it. Going forward, you know, if that does not happen in the projections, you know, we would have to come back and take a look at what the financial stability of the district looks like. So this is a key area to watch as you're putting together your budget over the next couple of weeks and months. Now, fair funding, we know will positively impact Scranton and many other school districts across the Commonwealth. But we haven't included that in our projections for a couple of reasons. One, the numbers are so large and they're so far away that it's hard to put a real real pinpoint on what it exactly means for you within the next couple of years for planning for your budget. So we do, we do know that it will be positive. We're not entirely sure when it will happen. But as more information comes, you know, this is where that multi-year planning can be very effective in trying to plan through. You know, what does it mean for you? What does it mean for tax rates? What does it mean for the long term? Now, before you get to that point, there are a couple of things that I would want you to keep in mind as a board and as a school district. One is you would want to have your strategic priorities in order before you do receive that money. You know, estimates of, you know, $30 million, whatever the funding formula might might generate if it came to Scranton. You know, you would want to have a good idea of what kind of a school district do you want to be? Where do you want those funds to go towards? What kind of programs do you want to support? And are there any other concerns that you might want to address with those funds? So, you know, one of them might be the 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 local tax rate or anything else that you might do with those funds. You know, you'll want to have a good idea of what that what that long list of priorities are. And then you could start to chip away at each of those as you start to get better information of what those funds would look like. The other one is just the budgetary impact of those funds running through the budget. So I know we dive into the details of your budget when we do these projections. But one thing that we find that that kind of gets slipped into the background is every dollar that you spend in additional funding for your programs also goes through the charter school tuition calculation rate. So if you did take that full pot of money, put it exactly towards a program in your budget, the next year you would then increase your charter school tuition rate. So that's another reason why this multi-year planning can become very effective, especially if you're phasing in programs over time, doing one thing on the tax side, another on the program side. This can be very important to try and figure out what all those impacts mean for you in the long term. The other that we mentioned is the district's assessed value. So based on recent trends, this has been going down, which has been putting some on some downward pressure on your local on your local taxes. So if you want to generate the same amount of revenue, this means that tax rates have to go up in order to offset that decline in the tax base. And this is one of the thing, this is one of the 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 pieces of the thought process that went into the 2024 preliminary budget. So that 1.25% tax increase maintains that revenue amount in your budget level over 2023 and 2024, even though that assessed value has declined between those years based on the information that we can see. Now, we also know that the county is undergoing its reassessment process. And for the most part, that's revenue neutral for cities, counties, school districts across the across the Commonwealth. However, there's also a little bit of uncertainty after that. So we looked at a couple of other school districts that saw countywide reassessments within the past 10 years or so. And we found, you know, there were some minor decreases in those assessments in the years after the after that reassessment takes place. So county goes through the reassessment process, everyone gets their tax bills, and then there's a little bit of variability in those years afterwards as people take a look at the tax bills. And there may be some challenges to some assessments, which might make that number go down if that if that if that trend continues across a number of places. Now, another trend on the revenue side that we've talked about is the ESR funds. And I just wanted to commend the district and the board for your approach in using these. You've been able to take the funds and do a lot of creative things that, you know, you weren't able to with just the the state and local dollars that you had before the pandemic. So right off the bat, you took some of those funds and you piloted some important new programs like the STEM program or the Cyber Academy, put some of it towards capital and deferred some borrowing that had been included in prior capital plans. And you took a strong shot at replacing some ongoing needs that were across the district, purchasing Chromebooks, revamping curriculum, purchasing textbooks for students, all great things to use with these one-time funds. And as we're looking at these projections over the next five years, we're we're building back some of those investments into the the budget as Bree mentioned. So, you know, we're maintaining that cycle of curriculum or textbook replacement. We're maintaining those program investments going into the future. But those those dollars that are supporting them on the federal side are going away. We talked about capital and building needs, and there's a couple of different studies that are out that are ongoing that will have an impact on what that would look like in the next couple of years. There's four years that we're looking at in this projection timeframe. So the first one is Dewey is updating its feasibility study with some of the costs and priorities from those projects that were in that study that was completed just two years ago. But as a lot has changed since then, you've done a lot of work in your buildings. You've gone into them and kind of seen the current conditions behind the walls in some places. We've gone through the other end of the pandemic with inflation and supply chain disruptions. So those costs that we had several years ago, you know, they're they're doing the same projects would look slightly different now. So this is a very good time to be doing an update to that study. The other one's going to feed into those priorities as you try and take a look at that long list from Dewey and trying to figure out where do you begin? And one of them will be with which buildings you want to focus those dollars into. So the building utilization study and those decisions that'll come down the pike from there, that'll that'll also unpack where those funds go to within those buildings and the the phasing of them over time, over the next several years. And all those will get brought together in a capital improvement plan like we've done in the past, where you get to see the investments for the coming year, the anticipated needs for future years. And then where we like to bring this together with the projections is like we had talked about earlier with what is the what is the financial impact on the operating budget? So in the current 2023 budget, there's that transfer to the Capital Projects Fund. There was the borrowing that happened in 2023 and in the projection time period, just to anticipate some of those needs and the fact that we don't have those pandemic dollars or including some planned borrowing just to see, just to make sure that that would be in those projections, so you can plan around them depending on what the timing and the priorities might be once you get that information at hand. So we'll end here on your planning process for next year as you go into 2024, taking that preliminary budget, refining some of the assumptions on both the revenue and the expenditure side, and then deciding one of the more important questions after, you know, the structure of the programs and what your district will look like for the coming year. What will the tax rate be and how much will it change? So in scenario one, we we talked about how the 1.25% if you did that just to maintain the level of revenue and then made increases at the at the 3.95%. That will maintain the status quo with your current commitments, whether that's contracts, the facility upgrades, the academic programs that you've committed to currently. You're able to maintain that financial stability that you've that you've worked hard to achieve over the last several years with those ingredients in place. We know that there's a couple of pressure points in the budget, you know, pressure from from both the negative side where we have that declining assessment, but also potential uncertainty on the on the state subsidy side. So, you know, taking those conservative assumptions on state aid, looking at those tax increases, you know, you can manage your budget, setting aside any potential impacts from from the fair funding decision. So that means that you're at a pretty good place to be planning for any potential adjustments to programs or other enhancements that you might make. Now, scenarios two and three, they they outline what some of those have been based on conversations we've had with you and others, taking a look at the intermediate school schedule, pre-kindergarten programs. And here we show that, you know, even if you took out that tax increase in 2024, even if you added back in those programs in the 2024 or 2025 school year, you can maintain that budget stability if you go forward with the Act One Index beginning in 2025. So like we mentioned, one of those key tenants of the recovery plan is passing a structurally balanced budget. You know, this is not committing you to do an act one increase each year for the next four years. This is just saying, what are some of the criteria that the department's going to look at evaluating whether or not you can achieve a structurally balanced budget? One of the easiest things for school districts to control is that tax rate. So that's one of the things on the on the revenue side of the equation that they look at. But then there's also potential, you know, the cost savings that you might achieve on on the expenditure side, you know, whether that's you know, food future potential savings for prescription drug programs like you've had success in the past, charter school tuition, if you start to see positive trends there, you know, that's also going to have a positive impact to the budget. So, you know, all those are ingredients that go into determining whether or not the district has a structurally stable budget. So the other thing that I want to end on on that note is that, you know, due to the rate limitation increases of Act One, that's the other reason why we wanted to highlight that there. That, you know, if you did not see substantial increases in state funding over the next couple of years or if some other things went the other way in your budget, you know, that that would that may be an option that the district may need to consider to continue to balance its budget. So with that, that brings us to the end of our presentation here, Pat.
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to, you know, thank Ian and Bree for
And I think we're also available here to take any questions from the board or any clarifying questions or just comments that anyone may have.
Thank you, Ian. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So if we're looking at scenario two, add them back, the middle school schedule in two phases, correct? That would be, you know, partial next year and the second part in year two.
Yes, so the so scenario two is the the restoration of the middle school schedule over a two-year period, beginning in the 24, 25 school year. And then the second, the other half being added for the 25, 26 school year.
And I know, you know, year one obviously would show no tax increase because right now the tax increase dollar amount wise would be little, you know, around $700,000, correct?
That's correct.
We have about a 6.57 million dollars budget reserve.
We have about a 6.5 budgetary reserve in the preliminary budget adopted in August, correct?
Okay. And if we just, you know, we know fair funding, that's the question, when is it coming? While I'm on that topic, is that something we maybe we can reach out to our state legislators or our state reps to maybe have that conversation? They might not, obviously, they don't know the exact date, but maybe help us forecast better. Ask them when maybe we can anticipate that money might be coming.
I can
I mean, to me.
I don't think that's an answer anybody has yet.
For I think Dr. Saylor maybe was going to say something, but I think one of the first steps might be a visit to the website on the Basic Education Funding Commission. I, this is going to be a lengthy process. I mean, I, I certainly, I think we need to reach out, we need to reach out about HB 1422 and the the charter situation. We need to watch for the vouchers. I mean, any letters, any phone calls, that's always a positive thing. But I think the information on that website might give everyone a good idea of the complexities of this situation.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is it two years, five years? I mean, we got the Democratic House, we got a Democratic governor, like, to me, the car, I mean, we're looking at the cars are in our favor right now getting that money, or at least in drips and grabs. And we've already seen more money coming in every year where it's a conservative role. I mean, I'm going to take a little conservative roll of the dice a little bit to get some things where we need them. And right now, I think the middle school schedule is where we need to start growing on this study period. So I would, if if I'm listening to that correctly, if we didn't do a tax increase next year, but we, you know, obviously, you know, didn't do a no tax increase every year, when that projection was just no years, we would still be in the, you know, within the act, we wouldn't be going above the Act One every year. We would still be able to be within that would meet the recovery plan, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Why was that not shown?
It's stated, it shows on page
Like, was that shown, like?
It is shown if you go to, if you show the def, if you see the deficits projected in each budgetary scenario and you go to page 17, you will see that the revenue generated by going to the Act One can offset that. So it's put, while it's not shown directly underneath it, it's putting the two pages together.
Right, so then then next year could be that that conversation, we can see, you know, where we're at next year to have that, okay, I see that. I see, I mean, that's where I'm at. I mean, every year is this these conversations, these projections we're having, like, when I got on the board, we had the recovery plan where it said every year we got to raise it 5. whatever percent. But then, you know, the following year is like, you know, Dr. Finney came to us and said, you know what, this year you don't have to raise it. You know, and then now we ended recovery plan and said, you know, and we got out of monitoring the same thing, you have to raise it every, you know, 5% every year. And now we're getting a thing where it said, you know, you might not have to raise it. But like, we have to come up with ways to stop raising these taxes. And it's just, we're taxing people out of here. We have to, I don't know, it's tough. These are tough conversations. But I think we do need us as a board, need to have some more communication with our legislators, and we need to start putting some pressure on them because that's what they campaigned on, that's what they promised. And now we, with the community, with our teachers, with our, you know, with our residents, need to start knocking on their doors down in Harrisburg and say, hey, come on, show us the money. Because everything's in our favor now. That court case was everything, everybody's waiting for that, everybody, you know, hey, let's wait and see what this court case. You know, nobody's appealing it, so this should be easy now. So then I just think, I think now we need to, we've been very conservative. We have, you know, a lot more. We have a lot more, we're in a lot better position now to start slowly increasing and building upon stuff like the middle school schedule and that's all I have to say right now. Thanks.
Anyone else? Pat, to to what or Ian perhaps? In 2025, there's a spike in the Act One Index to 8.1%. To what is that attributed? And I apologize if I missed that.
Ian, you want to take that one?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. The spike in 2025 to 8.1 in the
Oh, yeah, so that's some of the the lingering impacts of the pandemic. So I think that's partly the the growth in wages and partly inflation is flowing through. That's increasing the base rate. And then since your adjusted rate is much higher than that, you can increase your taxes even higher. It's one of the, I think it's one of the perverse incentives in Act One. It's, you know, districts with little taxing ability have the ability to raise that rate higher, which, you know, puts a greater burden on it. But that's one thing that's going behind there is the impacts of the inflation driving that number up for Scranton in particular.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I think, you know, I would just, you know, say like, if you look at scenario one, which is the baseline scenario. When we first looked at this back in May of 2023, no, excuse me, let me take that back. The amended recovery plan assumed that to maintain a baseline, it would require a 4.19%. I think it was a 4.16% tax increase annually. In May of 2023, there was presenting, you know, we had some more financial data, we had some more information on on our budget. It was then projected to be 3.95%. And now we're here almost in November of 2023, and excuse me, let me take that back. It was 3.95% starting in 2024. Now we're here in November of 2023 with a projection showing a 1.25% in 2024, you know, 2.7% less and 3.95% in 25 through 28. Can still get us there, I think, just, you know, support some of the improved financial operations of the district. You know, we we continue to see increased revenues from various different sources, you know, that has been kind of lowering that needed tax increase to maintain the baseline.
So I just kind of want to make a couple of points here. I think it's important that we fully explain PFM and their role here in the district. So they are the consultants that are assigned to us by the state. I just, I want that explained.
PFM, yes, they are, they're the technical consultants assigned to the Scranton School District through the, you know, recovery process.
Right, so they are here because of the recovery process.
Correct, they've been with us since 2015.
And and we don't, we don't pay PFM. That is what the state has, as a courtesy, I guess I would say, provided to us to help us through the recovery process.
That is correct.
Okay, so these are their, the projections that they have put together. So when I'm looking at scenario two, I don't disagree with you, Director McAndrew. I I fully believe we've got to figure out a way to bring that that duty period back. I think that's important for our middle schools that we we work on that. So I don't want to put you on the spot here, Dr. Saylor. But I guess since you are here acting as our recovery officer, and these are the state's projections, what what is your input regarding these scenarios, specifically scenario two? If we were to attempt to have no tax increase? these scenarios, specifically scenario two, if we were to attempt to have no tax increase and bring back the start of our duty period?
You, do I need to pull this closer?
You, you can certainly do that, no tax increase in this budget, and bring those back as Mr. Laffey said, staggered over two years. What, the only caution I would make is you're kicking the can down the road. You, everybody needs to understand that if you do that, there will be tax increases in the future. You can't do it without funding it at some point in time. I would go back to, to what Sean was saying, in that you, you don't know. It's a budget, just like your home budget is, and it changes as needs change and as revenue changes. Unfortunately, unlike your home budget, you can't go out and get a second job to, to supplement your budget like you can at home. But it will change, and let's hope that the fair funding formula is approved more quickly than I think it will be. We were talking, Mr. Laffey and I were talking about that today, and I predict five years before the legislature actually gets that finalized. We'll see how close I am.
I, I hope you're very wrong.
Oh, I do too. I hope I'm very wrong. But I also know how slowly they move. But I think my caution would be, you can do it. You can start bringing the programs back without a tax increase this year. But there will be tax increases in the following years. Whether they will be at this rate or not, you won't know until you get out there.
Yeah, and I think it's just important to know, obviously, like, this, it's a relatively conservative number estimated for the BEF and SEF. It's, it's, it's at a rate that's been, that's been less than what we've seen in the past few years. However, you know, if those, if they continue, outside of the fair funding, if they continue to, you know, fund BEF at similar levels, it's going to, everything's going to change when that continues. But I think we need to, when we're forecasting, be conservative and look at like a more historical approach.
I think that it's a tribute to PFM's work over the years with us, that we do have a roadmap going forward into the future. Things may change, we may get lucky, we may get unlucky, we may be able to limit the tax increases, we may have to bite the bullet and really sting people, which nobody wants to do. But if we want our school doors to open, we may have to do. But to have the roadmap is an essential part of restructuring the stability of this district. And it is a tribute to everybody how far we've come, that we can confidently look forward to this. Thank you, Ian. Thank you, Bree. Thank you, Pat.
Just one other thing I wanted to note. There's a couple assumptions in here that I want to make sure I understand. So the 100 million level up, that's an assumption. We, we don't know that for sure, whether we're going to get that.
Correct. It's currently, still has not been decided. It was in the proposed budget from the state level, and if there's an allocation for it, how it's going to be distributed has not been determined yet.
Okay. And I have just one other question as I'm digesting this. There's a statement in here under capital, it's on page 11, where it says, "Over the next several years, the district will continue to address the large inventory of building and renovation needs." So would it be correct to say that regardless of the building reconfiguration plan that we determine, there will still be a large need for building and renovation costs?
I would, I would assume, yes. I, I think, you know, no matter what road we head down with building utilization, there are still many other buildings in the district that need significant work.
Okay. So those, those are two assumptions that are built into this, these models. Okay.
Yeah, you'll see in 2025 and 2027, it's noted that there's an additional expense added to our, to our projections for anticipated borrowings to address, to address future needs. I believe it does say the most recent capital plan, I think we meant to say the anticipated future capital plan that is being put together as we speak.
Yep, that's right, Pat. Your current capital plan is fully funded with the 2023 borrowing and the ester funds.
Thanks, Ian.
May I add something? I think I say this year after year, but because we are so underfunded from, by the state, we are in this current position. And it's unfair for the board to have to choose between what's best for the students versus hurting the taxpayers. I feel like it, it does not put us in a good situation. I, I hope we can get past this and with, with the state, that they can realize what is happening here. And I, I really want to get to the point where we could, you know, do the duty period and pre-K, like, those have been my priorities. We, we want to focus on academics, and those two things are essential for that to happen. So I think with this, like, it's just unfair year after year for the board to be put into this position where it's like, you know, choosing these things that we both, you know, we don't want to raise taxes, we want these things back for the students. And I just, I want us to get past that, that, you know, if you don't do this, this is going to happen, or we're going to end up in receivership, like all the threats and everything. I just, I want this state to step up. I want other options. To me, this isn't, this isn't good enough. So, I mean, not, not the work, just the options. Like, I want better. And until we get that, the funding and everything, to do what, what's best for our students and taxpayers, I just, I'm, I just want other options. Frustrating.
Does everyone here have contact information for our legislators, or do you need me to provide that again?
It doesn't hurt to send them out just in case someone needs it. I would like for you to provide that. Thank you.
Also, perhaps if one could ask the public as well, to those watching tonight, and perhaps we can reiterate this at the board meeting. Letters to legislators are very effective. For every letter they receive, they assume 50 people think the same but haven't taken the trouble to write. So perhaps at the board meeting, we might mention that and provide those addresses, Katie, if that's okay?
I'd be happy to.
If I may, I pulled up some, sorry, I can't not ever say, I pulled up some information when you were saying that, and there is a hearing on Thursday regarding the Basic Education Funding Commission, and they accept public comment. So anyone, any of us or the public can go on and submit it. Testimonies will include discussion about how school tax structures affect Pennsylvania businesses and taxpayers. So talking about ways we can get involved and, and speak up, that's an easy one, I guess. So if you just go to the Basic Education Funding Commission website, pull up the first, go to news releases, news release, click the first one, and it'll give you the link to submit public comment. And to Director Chazek, your comments, I fully agree with. It is very difficult for us to be in these positions. I think it's a mix of the state not stepping up, and then us having the burden of all of the past decisions on our shoulders. I was reviewing previous information, and back in 2006, when McKissick was here, they said that we had the most deplorable buildings in Pennsylvania. And we haven't, we are just now starting to work on our buildings because of the extra funding we've received. And it's unfortunate that here we are in 2023, and everything has been put on our shoulders. Stop raising taxes, fix our buildings, don't take away this, bring back that. So we are in very tough positions. Unfortunately, fortunately for us, we decided to be elected and sit here, and it is tough. But I know that we'll all work through it together. I am nervous looking at this and hearing things like, you could do it now. The problem is the can was always kicked down the road and no one ever picked it up. And that's why we're here where we are now. So I'm terrified of kicking the can down the road and no one picking it up. And then I'll sit there and I'll have to pick up the can if I'm still here, and I'll, I don't know that I will have others behind me picking that up too. So it, that just terrifies me, because as we know, I have my child's in this district, we all have, we're stakeholders for one reason or another. And I don't want to see us back at the point where we're borrowing money to pay our teachers. So I just want to keep that in mind, that was not very long ago. And it is unfortunate that a lot's on our shoulders, but we'll be advocates as much as we can and pick up the burden as much as we can, I'm sure.
Catherine, thank you for that innovative and very quick research. Would you be able to spread that link around? Just, just put it in an email at some point?
You could do it, because I sent it to you two weeks ago.
Oh, that.
Oh, dear.
Nifty, huh?
Oh, I got.
It could have gone to your junk, but that, I don't think it was in the last PSBA update that I, that would have come from my advocacy ambassador's address. I think it was the previous one.
You sent it to all of us?
I, I don't, in my role with PSBA, my contact is to be with the board president, the superintendent, and the PSBA liaison. But certainly, any of you feel free, and I, I don't think I'd get sent to PSBA jail if I were two.
I hide my head in shame. I hide my head in shame. But if there is a chance, then there's a link where we can make public comment, I would recommend that as many people as possible do it. And yes, I can go and look there, Catherine, but if you did send it to the board, it would be great.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. And any further comment on the PFM presentation? I'd just like to thank Ian and Bree, as usual, for a fantastic job with Pat, with Dr. Saylor, with all of the people who have helped us come as far along the road as we can. Great to see, keep our heads up and see where the horizon and see where the road will lead us.
Thank you, Ian. Thank you, Bree.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Katie?
Onward. We will have, under the consent agenda, motions to approve the bill list and exception bill list, delinquent tax report, treasurer's report, repository sales, budget transfers, disposal of assets, and if any, real estate assessment approvals. And of course, if there are, I'd like those to be pulled from the consent agenda. And next we will have a motion to approve the proposed final 2024 budget. Pat?
Yes, based on, you know, we are putting on some final touches on it. As you will see, we have a few options to be looking at. So we will be hopefully coming to the board with a few different options to look at.
Very good. Thank you. And a discussion of the pilots and the HUP test. Pat, I, I think we can tag team this a little bit. Pat and I, we participated last week in the shared services committee meeting, and this came up as one of the subjects. Pat and I had also been talking about this, because in some information I read about the school code, I noticed an increase in our, unfortunately, I was saying that it was what, per, like, per foot, and it's actually per acre or something?
Yeah, it was, it was per foot, it'd be a lot of money.
I, I was working on mitigating our financial issues quite nicely. But the state, there is a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes to the district from the state for state-owned property. And that rate is increasing.
It's increasing from, I think it was $2 a square foot to $2.50 a square foot, I believe.
Now, I have you saying square foot, it's acre, isn't it?
Acre.
Acre.
Excuse me, yeah, acre, correct.
So it's, it's not, the best, we had a better scenario, but it's still, it's still positive news. But the, the HUP test discussion has been an ongoing discussion, Director Yanni, you know that as well, of the shared services committee. And the city did initiate the process to put out a request for proposals or qualifications. And they have selected a firm. I, I know that was in the notes from the meeting, the Rudolph?
I believe it was, yes.
Yes. Rudolph Clark, do I have that correct?
I believe so. And they are, I believe, I spoke to the city business administrator today, they're working on a contract, I believe it's being reviewed by their legal team now.
Okay. And our discussion during that meeting led perhaps to the consideration of an intergovernmental agreement when we get to that point. We are very happy to have the city foot the bill for this work, but we certainly want to make sure that should players change at any time, we have access to, to their work product, to, you know, to use to our advantage as well. So this is working out nicely, because they are taking the financial load here at this point. But we want to make sure that those tees are crossed and eyes are dotted, should things change down the road.
We, we have such a huge proportion of non-taxpaying enterprises in this district. I think something like 34% of our land is, is there. And while these people certainly benefit from city roads and other benefits, I, I believe firmly that we are not getting a fair proportion of pilot payments at all. And I hope that this HUP test can be applied and will see us.
Yes.
Improving.
And I, I think we have a few different angles from which we can approach this situation. I know the city has sent letters requesting payments in lieu of taxes. I certainly think that's something, an initiative that we can grow. I think it's something we could do together. There'd be no reason, I don't think, that, you know, it couldn't be on joint letterhead going to these organizations. Because certainly, you know, I don't ever want to see this conversation take a negative tone. We have wonderful organizations in this community that, because they do not have the burden of property taxes, are able to provide wonderful services to our citizens in this community. But as you said, they're still going to and from those organizations on paved roads with streetlights and, and all of those kinds of things. So, you know, we just have to make sure that, that that conversation is, is taking place, so that we understand the good works that are being done, but also that those organizations understand the significant costs that are associated with operating a city and a school district.
With that said, Director Good Martin, and we've, we've spoken about this before, have we of the city reached out to the federal government about, again, the veterans that aren't paying taxes because of that, for that exemption?
No.
Possibly recouping some of that money?
No, and I think that needs to be part of this conversation as well. Because I, I think this state-owned property discussion is a great example of that. You know, that they are helping to, to bridge that gap. And certainly, if the federal government is providing a, a good program, I don't know that they can just say, and you have to pay for it. So I think that's a very important conversation as well.
Director Holmes, when the information on the state program came out, it immediately brought us back to your, your comment related to the federal as well.
Okay.
Thank you. And do we have any contract updates?
Just one. We have, and you will see it a little bit later down the road when we get to education. But we are looking to, we're looking to amend our current subscription with IXL, which is a math and ELA intervention tool used at our secondary schools. The, as Ms. Miller put a memo in the board packet, we consolidated the contract to receive discounts for a larger, a larger platform, meaning seven schools, not seven individual schools. Okay? Schools has been, have been choosing you some Title I dollars to purchase this subscription for, for, for quite some time. So we do have the one-year subscription that we are locking in. We are proposing that the board allow us to enter a three-year contract, which is on the agenda for this evening, to be utilized at those, at the seven, at seven schools within the district, including all the secondary schools. And we believe that the savings from the discounts for the multiple licenses and the three-year extensions will save the district over $25,000.
Thank you. And that's all for budget and finance.
Thank you, Katie. Just before we proceed, I wonder if it would be possible to turn the air conditioning down slightly on the stage, because the teeth that are chattering are sort of out of sync with each other. It's freezing up here. If somebody could possibly turn it down a bit, that would be great. Ty?
We will have a motion to approve any donations, if any.
Okay. Danielle?
Under education, we'll have a motion to approve permission to attend meetings, conferences. Motion to approve West High Ski Club to Killington, Vermont. Motion to approve Scranton High Show Choir and night amplified show band trips for competitions. Motion to approve enhanced scholar program with WVIA, and a motion to approve IXL subscription expansion.
Can I just ask, I just have a brief comment to make about the IXL subscription. I think these programs, these subscriptions are great. And are, I don't know if you know, is this particular program integrated into the curriculum, or is it used more for remediation, like a study, like, like a study island? I just want to make sure that the money that we're spending, the programs that we're purchasing are being utilized well. And it's, because sometimes what happens is, you know, like, oh, yeah, we just, we knew it. Now, I know that Katona provided this information, so I would expect that this one is.
So she's going to come, she's going to come up and speak to it. And Director Cleary, we've had many conversations on who's using what services, who's using what products. Are we going to have a comprehensive district-wide product? So I'll rely on Ms. Miller to help you answer that question.
Before she starts, because I just, before I give, let me just finish. I just want to make sure that what we're purchasing, we're using, and we're using well. And we're not just renewing because we have it. And then you find out it's in somebody's closet, and it's not being utilized. And if it's only being utilized in one building, why? So, so I just wanted to make that comment.
No, it's a, it's one we've been talking about for weeks now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I would sound.
Can't hear you. It's not on. I don't think it's on. You're the first one up. Can't hear you. It's not on. I don't think it's on. You're the first one up.
Yeah, it's on.
There we go. Okay, so IXL is a math and ELA intervention program. It's an online subscription service that some schools have been using for at least five to seven years already, being purchased with their ATSI funds and title funds. And so some schools have it written into their ATSI plans, utilizing it specifically for special ed students or for students across all classrooms for math and ELA. So one of the unique things about IXL is it allows each of the individual students to focus on their specific level. So you have access from K to 12 curriculum that is available to each student. So there's a diagnostic that's taken at the beginning, and then each individual student is given their own learning path. And so as part of Ms. Gribek's SST time, students are, teachers are able to utilize this program as it strands the students into groups and allows them to work collaboratively and individually on each of the content areas that they need to focus on. So it not only allows the teacher to see those strands and be able to differentiate the curriculum, but then it also allows the teachers to have access, K through 12. So if you have a special education student who may be in, say, ninth grade but is functioning in math at a third grade level, they can actually access that content and begin working with that student individually, back up the levels that they are needed.
So is that used by the regular ed, the regular classroom teachers? Or is it more like reading and math intervention specialists and the special ed teachers?
It's both.
It's both, okay.
Many of our, our middle schools, for example, all teachers use it across all different platforms, whether that be the Title I teachers, the special education, or the general education teachers. Our high schools are looking to implement it specifically with the special ed students for math and ELA interventions. And then, I believe, two of our elementary schools use it both in their Title I, special ed, and regular ed.
So once they do the diagnostic, it creates like a curriculum for that particular student or assignment?
So IXL has a unique ability, especially in its mathematics component, to be able to have an endless number of questions. So when a student answers a question correct, it'll give them something slightly harder. If that question then is wrong, it'll reduce it down a level and give them something slightly easier. And they'll continue doing that until it finds their level. And the program, through AI, learns where the students have deficits and where it has their strengths. And so creates an individualized program for the student to strengthen their weaknesses, essentially.
And then they keep doing it, it will continue to build. So once you do the diagnostic, you don't have to do another diagnostic?
So every time as you're answering questions and you're going into what they call the arena, it's constantly adjusting the diagnostic. And one of the interesting things, when I did the research on this, as more of our schools were looking to get it, South Intermediate School and Scranton High, I think, have had it the longest, as well as Armstrong. And as more schools have come into this, we began looking at the usage that IXL is receiving. South Intermediate School, I just know this statistic, but South Intermediate School answered more questions and spent more time in IXL in six months than the entire district combined did in Study Island.
So are we, you know, are there other programs that were, I don't know, double dipping or, you know what I'm saying?
So the buildings that are utilizing IXL, that is what they're using as an intervention system for math and/or ELA. Some of our other elementary schools may be using things like MobiMax or Acadiants, but they don't have both. And so that's why we see seven schools looking to access IXL.
Okay, so there's only seven. I did read it, but, okay. There's seven schools and the others are using alternate or other?
Yeah, they may be using alternative programs, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your explanation. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
You'll indulge me for just a moment since you're at the microphone. I just want to thank you publicly. I had the pleasure of participating in a tour of the STEM Academy through the Scranton Area Foundation's Women in Philanthropy Initiative about two weeks ago, maybe. And I, you blew everybody away. I have not really had the opportunity to be with everybody again yet, but, you know, a little scuttlebutt of conversations here and there. I know you really, you impressed everybody. The program just shone bright like a diamond in this district, and it was, it was wonderful. You held the rapt attention of a group of adult women for about 90 minutes on a Wednesday afternoon. And, you know, really a dynamic group of people, a great cross-section. We had a former school administrator from Western Wayne with us, people from, involved in industry, you know, all different backgrounds and experiences and, you know, professional women coming together. STEM is one of the initiatives of women in philanthropy, and I know they are always looking to grow partnerships. And I think a lot of great ideas were born that day. So thank you. It was an absolute pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Carol.
Okay, did we want to table that one motion?
Yeah, we're going to table the motion for the single wire informa cash products for this meeting. We will revisit that at another time.
All right, thank you. Discussion on hometown ticketing.
Yes, so about a year ago today, obviously, we passed, we passed the motion that said we would do a pilot with the hometown ticketing and running a cash option as well. We, obviously, when we instituted that, we had not gotten off the ground to host for the football season for the fall 2022. So we've now utilized it through the winter sports, the spring sports, if applicable, and obviously, the fall sports here with mainly football. So I've been getting a lot of questions whether we're going full electronic, if we will, or if we will maintain a cash option. I can say I'm working on pulling some of the usage reports. That will take some time because not all cash games were imported into hometown. But I can say, like, you know, I've been to many events this fall, and, you know, the majority of them probably still are utilizing the cash op option. But I do think hometown has, or some type of electronic purchasing has a place. I've seen people get out of that line and scan it and, you know, they want to come right in. I use it myself from when I, I bring my children to the game. You know, so I guess the question is, do we continue forward with the both options for the students in the community or in the district?
I don't see any reason not to. I mean, I'm hearing from the community that some people like you want to step out of line and use it, and then some are very comfortable with the cash option. So I don't see why we need to discontinue either one.
Yeah, I go to a lot of games. I pay cash, but I've seen people do both. I think it's working. I think people are happy, so I like it.
Yeah, and it hasn't become a, I guess, a administrative problem at this point. It does, if you talk to the ADs, it does take a little time to import the schedule, I think, into the app. However, the vendor has offered some assistance with that. So I'm hoping this season that operates a little smoother. I will say, you know, getting some ticket takers to work the cash booth has becoming a little more difficult. So we may see a need to look at this further down the road or to do something to entice some workers to, you know, to work those positions. But we're happy to continue on the path that we had for the past year.
Have we looked into, or we haven't discussed it, but like a season pass? So they don't have to do that every, like, go, if you want to do cash, I mean, you have to get on the line, and it takes longer, and sometimes people get frustrated, so that's why they get off the line and they do the hometown ticketing. But if you're going to go to every football game, you're going to go to every basketball game, at least for the students.
I will say that the hometown does offer a season's pass. You can purchase a season pass on hometown ticketing. I don't know that the district has ever done that for cash sales, but it's something we can look at and see if that's something that we can implement.
I mean, if it could be a reduced rate even to say, I don't know how many games we have a year, let's say 10 games. It's too, I don't even know how much it is to get in.
Yeah.
But $3 to get in, and we offer it for, you know, $25 or $20.
Football's like $4 for a dollar.
Four and two.
Good idea.
You know, and then they would have a card or something that they, that could just be scanned on their phone even. I don't know. Like, maybe that's something we could, you know, let's get, let's try to keep staying in the 21st century.
Yep, absolutely. No, I saw a comment on that as well, and I thought for the cash option, that is something that we should look at, how we implement it. I'll work with our team to see if it's a possibility. It is, it is an option on the hometown side. It does save either the processing fee or the admin fee. There is a slight savings on the hometown if you do choose that option.
Thank you. Okay, discussion, possible motion, technology education renovation?
Yes, so Ms. Miller, again, did a really nice job of preparing some information for you guys in the, in the weekend packet. We're looking at possibly a project in West Granton High School to kind of totally renovate an unused space in the basement and to add some updates to the industrial arts area. If you do recall, I'll let Ms. Miller hit on the educational piece of it. If you do recall, in the adoption of the 23 budget, we talked about West Granton High School equity between what they have and what Scranton High School has with things such as equipment like CNC router, router machines, et cetera. I will say, correct. I will say that we're working with Ethan from Dewey to establish a budget that we would present to you to consider. We have a draft budget now. We will refine it prior to, prior to presenting it to you. We are hoping potentially that we may be able to use some of our Besser funds as we were able to do with the STEM program here at Scranton High School. But if Ms. Miller would like to hit a little bit on the, on the education, the technology education pathway, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so at the beginning of last year, the new pathway for technology education, the old industrial arts, was approved to incorporate not only the fabrication side of like the wood and metal shops, but the engineering track for students who are interested within those fields. Those curriculums and pathways haven't been updated in, I believe, at least 20 or 25 years. And so looking at that pathway upgrade and the inequities between the two high schools, this proposed renovation was to get the differences between Scranton High and West High in that specific pathway reduced in order to have the same technologies available and labs with computers for this pathway to be supported between the two high schools.
Thank you.
Well, I'm excited to see the curriculum updated from industrial arts to technology education. Because industrial arts is no longer a term that we should be using. Just saying.
Yes, and so that process, working with Ms. Gribek, has already begun.
Right, and I knew that, and I knew some of the classes. It's very exciting, and I'm glad to see that we're moving along in that area.
Yeah, and so currently, all students who are interested in technology education take a rotation in their ninth grade year. For students, though, who are interested in engineering, may not be interested in that fabrication side and then are deterred from those programs because they don't want to go through the fabrication rotation. And so in that new pathway, those are separated out, giving students the option. And also, hopefully, that'll attract more students into those programs.
Well, and we have a need for those occupations.
Exactly.
High priority occupations are headed into a lot of those areas. CNC, it's near impossible to, I mean, they're getting hired for $80,000 at a high school. They're going to the current technical centers and trying to recruit students who have those skills.
Yeah, and I know, for example, I believe it's Johnson College has now even a nine-month program that's supported by General Dynamics for CNC router technicians. And so you can even go to Johnson College for nine months in an express program and be placed with those high salaries as well.
Excellent, thank you.
So would this then allow Scranton High students to go to West? Or you're saying Scranton High already has this?
So it would be.
I'm still good with industrial arts, by the way. So I just have to show my age there.
That's not what the Department of Ed calls it.
Okay, so they already have their own, Scranton High has tech education?
So this addresses the inequities between both buildings. It is upgrades at both. Most of the renovation and the upgrades occur at West Granton High School to get them on the same page. But there are, like, the computers themselves will be upgraded in both buildings. But Scranton High already has four different, well, three different shoprooms that are available to students, whereas West only has one. So renovating that second space would allow the teachers at West to be able to incorporate that engineering component lab that I put in the memo. And so while the vast majority of this goes to West, it is, it does incorporate both schools so that they're equitable in this pathway's implementation for the year, for the 24, 25 school year.
Okay. Thank you. That's great.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Discussion, possible motion, scoreboard and sound system.
Okay, so there's been a few, there's been a lot of discussion on scoreboards, both internal and external. So this one is specifically related to the gym here at Scranton High School. As you know, both, both high schools do utilize this, I believe, for basketball, West High and Scranton High School. Boys and girls are utilizing the space here. It's been brought to our attention that the scoreboard itself is original to the building, and the sound system, which is located in the ceiling, has not been operational for many years. We're looking into potentially, we have a couple of different quotes that we're working on from various products for a new, for a solution to two concerns, which is the scoreboard and the sound system incorporated into one. We're told that this is kind of like the direction that people are moving in, in this, in this sense where the scoreboard does operate as your sound system has, as well. They've been getting by with utilizing some movable speakers that I think are large, somewhat obstructive to view and was never deemed as a permanent fix. The, both, all, both options we're exploring would have some advertising opportunities with it to offset some costs in the future, as well as some curricular components for students related to TV productions and things like that where they can, you know, create videos and show them on the scoreboard or, you know, utilize it during, during the day, excuse me, during the game. So we are in the process of getting some quotes for that. More information is to follow. We're looking at potentially something on a cooperative contract. The funding source for it would need to be our capital, our capital program at this point. And we're going to see in a little bit that there may be some additional capital funds through some projects coming underbid that may be reallocated for this purpose.
Well, what I will say, I go to a lot of the basketball games, too. It's not just for the games. It's for, like, when the cheerleaders or the step dance, like, when they do their dances and the music cuts out.
Yep.
I mean, Mr. Coils in the audience, there's a lot of times that happens and right in the middle of the performance, so.
It's a heavily used space, and I think what we don't want to see is a situation which, which I think we, you know, got by by the skin of our teeth on, which is the lights situation at Memorial Stadium. We're able to get those done in time and not have a game affected by it. I'm not so sure you can say the same for the scoreboard at this point.
And I'm also thinking, maybe even, I know Scranton High uses that gym for graduation, might be something they can use for graduation, too.
So how about, could we look at, I know that West Granton's auditorium, like, their drama club had very poor mics. Their whole sound system was terrible for their last show. So if we're getting a cost, maybe we could throw in cost for mics and stuff.
Is that in the auditorium, you said?
Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's try to see what we can do for them as well.
So West High Auditorium?
Yeah, I know that for their last show, they were having to, they had to get somebody to come in and help them with all of their, their sound and their equipment. So I don't know how all sound systems work, but, I mean, if we're getting a cost, I have no clue. So maybe we could just look into that or reach out to Dr. Stevens at West to see what their sound system needs are as well?
Surly.
That'd be great.
Yes, I think, I think, don't hold me to pledge promised bloodlust on this one, but I think that there was an upgrade to the mic system when I saw the play here at Scranton High School. There was a good, they had good ten mics.
Here, yeah, but not at West.
But not at West. And I think, again, we need to keep focusing on the little things as well as the big things. If we're upgrading at one point, we need to look at and make sure that they don't always have to be identical, but that we're not leapfrogging so much in the favor, in that favor.
Right, yep. We're good now? Okay. Excuse me, discussion, motion to approve water filling stations.
So again, we're getting, we're getting some pricing. It's come to our attention that at the, all the secondary levels, at, let me back up. As you know, at the elementary levels, the, we were fortunate enough to receive a grant for the, I think it's called the Water Boys Bottle Filling Stations. So I believe that is throughout all of our elementary schools. Here at Scranton High School, I believe there's one of those stations in the STEM lab. But throughout the rest of the building, the water, the water fowls are turned off for one reason or another, and we're using water coolers. So at this point, we're kind of doing a little cost analysis on, is it more efficient to continue to purchase water coolers, have a service provided to us to purchase water? And it appears that we're going through these, I don't think they're meant for heavy use. Or should we look to potentially install possibly six of these similar bottle filling stations at our secondary schools? So we're getting quotes, we're working on that now. I'm working with our operations department to kind of determine what is the best path forward for the district. I don't have all the answers at the moment, but we want to. I don't have all the answers at the moment, but we wanted to put it on the agenda as we're still fact finding.
Can we look at what, I know you said some of the water fountains are turned off and they've been turned off for years. What is a long-term fix?
That's what we're, that's what we're looking for.
Can we have someone come in and give us an estimate?
Yeah, we're looking for a long-term fix where we're not, you know, utilizing water coolers at various points throughout the school.
So let me ask you, Pat, so the, the water filling stations would replace the current water fountain slash water coolers? In other words, like you would see in an airport, is that what I'm picturing here? So we would be taking out the water fountain and putting in one of those water fillers?
Correct, that's my understanding.
So we would be using water that would be then filtered versus the bottled water?
Correct.
Okay.
So presumably the piping and the water, we wouldn't be looking, it's only a question of replacing, not replacing piping or anything else, the water's coming there. It's how we get it out of the wall into the thing. I think that COVID was the end of the water fountain.
It, it very well could, could have been, I'm not sure. It's, I have not gotten a real great reason as to why they've been turned off, if it was COVID, test results or something of, of the other factor. Obviously, we wouldn't make any change without making sure everything was done correctly and safely.
No, I, I think from the lead report we got in both pre-COVID and, and, and the annual ones, they were fine. It was, it was very much if you, it was a COVID thing, that there was the, the risk of contamination through multiple users of, of the water filling stations, but I think that sounds great.
Have we heard anything from any faculty, staff or students at Scranton High here that there, there's maybe not enough water filling stations?
I, I've heard from the administration here that they had concerns over it. I've heard from the.
But there's not enough?
That there's, I believe the support staff, the custodial staff had, had concerns over it as, as well. Whether it was the quantity or not, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
I can refine that, I can go through my emails and see exactly pinpoint what the concern was.
Yeah, I, I know I had, I think, one faculty member over the summer reach out just to, to let me know that they felt like their students were leaving the classroom and having to travel, you know, maybe down the floor to, to get to fill up their water, so they're losing class time, you know, having to find a station. So do you think that this would help to eliminate that, these water filling stations?
I, I hesitate to answer that question until I physically see all the locations myself, but we would, we would hopefully intend that it wouldn't have, it wouldn't create any longer travel for a student than it already is.
Right, okay.
Into that, if we were to get the stations that have continuous water, I know Haley told me once that she couldn't fill her water bottle because the, the jug was empty, so if you're not having to fill it, then you don't have a child going to get water and can't get it.
That's true.
Well, it's a lot of manpower too to constantly keep up on the empty water bottles.
I'm sure she could have found another one, but I guess she forgot to fill her bottle or something and.
But still, the manpower to keep replacing them, to me, water filling stations, I would think would make a lot more sense.
Have we, and just have we recently, I don't know who, if this is Sydney or somebody else, but I know we already got grants for this in elementary school, but I, I know at one point there were a lot of grants for this. Have we seen if there was anything out there? I, I know we might want something sooner than what might take a grant application, but I don't know if there's still as many grants out there for this or not, but I don't know if it's something we've looked into.
Let me look into that.
Would it not be, would it not be a use of our PESR in the terms of it's part of the making the, making it safer? I don't know, maybe that's worth looking at too.
It's, it's potentially, I mean, student health is certainly an allowable use of, of our PESR funds as well.
I can hold off my inter later. No, I'm good.
Sure?
Yeah.
Can I move along?
Yep.
Okay. This one I'm very happy to read. Motion to approve, very happy to read this one. Motion to approve construction contract bid award for project number 033033, elevator replacements at West High Northeast and South Intermediate.
So yes, we are happy to report that the bids have been received. There were three, three bids in total. The original budget approved by the board was just shy of 2.3 million and the bids including the alternates, which are recommended to be included, are 1,585,000. So, you know, we're approximately $700,000 under budget and we will have a motion to award those contracts at the next meeting.
Good news.
Very exciting.
And we like under budget.
Yes.
Were we able to determine any kind of projected start times for that?
Ethan, do you have a?
Sorry, Ethan.
So it's a good question. Our projected start time is exactly 10 days after it's approved at the board meeting, because it requires 10 days to sign the contract for approval. Once that happens, we'll start getting some mittles. I've actually already told the contractor to start preparing some mittles, get them to us on day one, we'll do a quick review and you can get the elevator ordered.
So are we, then we're just, we starting with West, right?
Yeah, West, West is the most critical.
Right, so the other, the other two can wait until the summer or is that, no? Are you just going to do them all?
Well, we scheduled them all to, to go as fast as they can, but West is the priority.
Okay, so when you say, you know, 10 days after, like, I guess, because I'm going to tell you honestly, I'm, I'm going to be questioned, well, when are we getting it? So I guess my point to you is, okay, so you're going to start it in 10 days, like, does that mean then we're, that's when you're going to start ordering stuff? Like, I, I thought I remember you saying that we couldn't do any work with the kids in there or with the staff in there, so are we realistically looking at it wouldn't be in effect until the summer?
We're actually looking at getting the contractor in a little bit earlier, as long as the school district's okay with contractors working in the building.
Okay.
The basic work between now and April is demolition.
Okay.
Because it takes about 20 weeks for the elevator to be ordered and delivered.
Okay.
At this point, that's the time that I cannot change.
Sure. But you could start the demolition?
Yeah, start the demolition, because it's not working now, so get all the stuff out of there and just prepare for the new one.
Okay, great, that's good news, thank you. Thanks for your work on that.
Discussion, possible motion for body cameras.
Okay, so the safety and security department has received a quote from, from an omnia cooperative purchasing for a five-year contract for six body cameras. They would be worn by our school district SSOs at after-school events where most of our, you know, one-on-one conflicts occur. And then throughout the day, throughout the right regular school day, they'd be worn by the Scranton School District employed SSOs. It does come with a cost, at a cost of $60,338 for the five-year contract, or approximately $12,000, $12,067 per year. It is an omnia cooperative purchasing contract, so we could move forward with it under that. It, it would be funded under the newly established in 2023 safety and security budget. They see some, you know, potential with that, it's not just the cameras itself, they come with obviously the charging banks, which act as a data transfer and backup area where all video would be, I guess, transferred and stored in a, in a secure, in a secure environment to be accessed if necessary. It, I think it would require some policy, utilizing those would require some policy revision by the district, but it's, we're seeing it as a new trend in certain school districts, I think Stralsburg area, Mr. Carney was talking to Stralsburg area, East Stralsburg area school district are, are, are looking into them as well. And we do know that Coatsville School District is currently utilizing the, the same brand that we're putting, that we're sculpting out, that, that we're pricing out.
Is this the same one that the Scranton, at least part of it is?
I believe it is, I believe that's where.
And, and would six be enough?
Well, it's intended to, to grow, they are not cheap, obviously. When we, when we quoted the entire fleet of 20 contracted and six district hired SSOs, it was, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. So I think the intent was, let's get just enough to have on any SSO that's working in event, and we haven't typically scheduled more than six SSOs per, per, per event, and then grow, grow this program as the budget allows.
Whereas we can find grant money.
Grow, find grant.
Yeah, and that's a, and I was going to bring this up.
Imagine there's got to be safety money out there somewhere.
I was going to bring this up under personnel. Where are we at with the city and the shared grant rider?
We have interviews this week, actually.
Right, and when did we originally come up with that, like that agreement between the city? I know we had, we came up an agreement, we had a candidate and they backed out, but how, how long ago was that?
I believe she was set to begin working with us sometime in August, but.
But the original agreement with us and the city to come up with this?
Over, over the summers.
Over the summer, okay. Is there, I mean, us as a board, I think we need to come up with a point where if it's not, if we can't come up with something together, I think we need to readdress it and try to find somebody ourselves, because there's so much things, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, grant, maybe we could pay with grants and grants, like we're such a big organization, not having anything is really hurting us, I think.
Well, I, I, I will say, I believe we have three interviews set up and my goal was to have a recommended candidate for the November 13th meeting.
That would be excellent.
All right, awesome.
Okay, and I think I'm done, thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. Sean?
All right, personnel, motion to approve the personnel report, and then we have a motion to approve telework agreement for employee 1433.
Okay. Tara?
Under policy, we'll have a motion to approve First Read 815, acceptable use of internet, computers and network resources, and a motion to approve First Read 819, suicide prevention and response.
Okay. Can we also be looking, Pat, you just mentioned the policies related to the body cameras, if that's a, a simple thing to accomplish, perhaps that can be brought forward, First Read at our next meeting? I'm sure that's something that is more a legal question than it is board input.
So First Read for the cameras?
If that's possible, you know, I'd, I'd love to have that in motion as we're considering this, rather than backing into it later.
All right, Sarah?
Under special education, we will have a motion to approve settlement agreements. And then under consent, we will have a motion to approve the stepping stones agreement, the Learn Well Services Contract, the Green Borough North Castle Agreement, St. Christopher's Residential Services Contract, and finally, the Keystone Community Resources Agreement.
Okay, anyone on that? Okay, thank you. Moving on to vendor relations, Catherine?
We will have a motion to approve mob and pop contracts, if any, a motion to approve West Granton High School TV studio, and we will have a discussion motion for MOU transportation contract corrections and insurance.
Okay, so the first one I just want to mention is the West Granton High School TV studio. If, if you remember back in August, excuse me, October 2022, we approved the upgrade to the Scranton High School TV production studio. At that time, the motion read that you instructed the administration to look into West Granton High School as well. So we've done that, we've received a, we received a quote from the same vendor. It is a CoStar quote totaling $132,447. Both those, both those camera, excuse me, both those TV studio upgrades were included in the 2023 budget. So this is something that, you know, it's taken a little bit of time, but it is, but, but we do have the, the quote for it and again, it is, it is a budget expense.
They, they're still using pedestal cameras over there, the way they were here?
You know, probably, most likely, I would imagine, yeah.
And they may have, I don't know what would be included in that, but that might have a mic system or something, so you could probably look into that.
When you mentioned that earlier, I was.
Right.
Like looking right across the agenda from it, yeah, it might be there.
Perfect, okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, well, anyone?
There is just one more of this, there is a discussion on the MOU for transportation contract corrections and insurance. So Attorney Foin and I will, I think, hopefully be able to explain this the best, but, so there's, so there's a couple of issues. The one is, there's two typos in the contract. The vendor name is incorrect due to a lack of a space between a set of words. And it's silly, they are ordering new buses for the district through the Department of Motor Vehicles, they are trying to, saying they need to be titled in this incorrect name, I guess you'd say, right? Which will then cost the vendor significant money to have them retitled once, once it is corrected. So that is a very simple, just fix, it's, it is a typo. There is another typo in the insurance section where it talks about the, commercial insurance? General liability?
General liability.
So it's, we left the, there's no, it should say, we believe, $1 million, there is no one on it, it's just six zeros. So we need, we, we need to correct those. But there, at the same time, there is also a request from the vendor for us to potentially look at amending the insurance requirements specifically related only to cars and vans, small SUVs, small sedans, not changing the coverage that, that we have on the buses in the current contract. So Attorney Foin and I are currently looking into this. We have, we've referenced some other, we are contacting our own insurance carrier to see what limits they would recommend. We've referenced the NEIU as to a similar provider of similar transportation sizes, what their carrier limits are as well. So we are looking into this matter and we hope to have an answer soon.
Well, if I could comment, you know, essentially, the requirements in the contract didn't really distinguish between, you know, a large bus and a van in terms of the requirements. We did actually take a look at the regulations for minimum insurance and the proposal that was made by Pete's Garage was within those limitations. So the thing to understand is that since this is a, you know, since our, since we have a vendor, the insurance really is not a protection for the district, it's a protection for passenger who could be injured or the, you know, the insure, the, the bus company itself. So it doesn't really impact our liability, because it's operational, you know, negligence that it protects, so.
How would the change, like compared to what our other vendor that has vans, like Red Top, is it similar?
Yeah. It's very similar. There, obviously there are multiple lines of coverage. I think what I'm struggling with and I still need to sit down and do is get all the lines next to one another, see where they at and where, and where they differ and understand what the differences mean, right? You know, like what's the implications of it? But I would say what they've proposed is very similar, pretty close to what our current vendor has and what our, what the NEIU uses as, as, as well. We just need to do a little refinement in terms of the comparisons.
Some more info, no?
I'm sorry?
Some more information is coming.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Any more for any more, is there anything else further we do? Then I say, without objection, we are joined.